Let me do that. You need a prompter, Dan. That'd be really helpful.
Good evening and welcome to the August 29th, 2016, meeting of the Town of Scarborough Planning Board. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it demands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Karen, could you please take the roll?
Ms. Saunders, here. You're not Ms. Saunders. Oh, I thought you said Ogless. Nope.
We already have controversy right out of the gate.
I'm not here yet. Mr. Beale?
Here.
Ms. Ogless?
Here.
Mr. Fellows?
Here.
Mr. Mazur?
Here.
And Mr. McGee?
Here.
Thank you. Next item is approval of the minutes from the August 8th, 2016 meeting. Oh, right. Just been reminded that for the record, I need to indicate that Mr. Beale is a voting member this evening. So we're not quite a full board. He's our first alternate. So the next item is approval of minutes from the August 8th, 2016.
So moved.
Second. Have a second? Any discussion? All in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you. Item number four, the planning board will conduct a public hearing to receive comment on amendments to the Town of Scarborough zoning ordinance regarding multifamily housing in the Higginson Parkway District. The zoning ordinance amendment proposes to enable multifamily housing, buildings with three or more dwelling units, to be regulated in our Higginson Parkway District, HP, by physical size, maximum building footprint, height, et cetera, rather than number of dwelling units. Jay or Dan would you like to introduce this one?
Sure. I'm happy to, Mr. Chair. And yeah, this is an amendment in the Higginson Parkway District, which applies to the Enterprise Business Park and also the land area on both sides of Higginson Parkway in the center of town. And as you introduced, it's proposing to regulate the size of multifamily housing differently than it's regulated today. Already in the Higginson Parkway Zone, multifamily housing is allowed for if it's part of a mixed project or mixed-use project. So what that means is there can be some multifamily housing if it's part of a project that also includes some commercial development. That was established three or four years ago to diversify what can happen on Higginson Parkway and also to potentially induce development on the Parkway. If there's some people and housing around, that could help the commercial development side of the area. When the ordinance was adopted a few years ago to get at the scale, the size of multifamily housing, it was decided that it should be regulated by the number of units per building. And that number was set at 12, which was used in some other zones. Like the board has considered over the last few months with some other zones and the Town Council has approved for some other zones to kind of to get away from regulating by the number of units because not all units are created equal. A one-bedroom unit is much smaller than, say, a three-bedroom unit. The town has, in a variety of zones, started regulating multifamily housing by building footprint and height and setbacks. And so this is proposed to do the same thing on the Higginson Parkway District as was introduced. And due to the scale of development that's possible on Higginson Parkway and the location of the land, which isn't close to many neighborhoods or other development, it was decided and is recommended that buildings, multifamily buildings can be up to 12,500 square feet, which is consistent with kind of the industry standards in New England around kind of suburban locations like Scarborough. And it's also proposed that these buildings should be no greater than three stories or 45 feet in height. And that's by and large the height limit that's been used for most residential development in Town of Scarborough. That's different than the height allowance currently for commercial development in Higginson Parkway. The Higginson Parkway was established, district was established a number of years ago. At the time, it was visioned that potentially some office buildings could occur there that might be vertical-type development, you know, six stories, 75 feet in height. That hasn't bared out, at least so far. And though that's still the allowance for commercial development in the Parkway, through discussions in our department with the Town Manager and SEDCO, the thinking here is that if we're going to enable kind of more multifamily in this zone, first, as a starting point, we should start with what's also allowed in other parts of town and not necessarily allow, you know, apartment-style housing that might be four, five, six stories in height. But more three stories, again, that's been in keeping with multifamily allowed in other parts of town. So that's really kind of the background around the zone change. Like I said, it's a similar amendment to what we did in the TVC Zone, the Town of Village Center Zone that applies to Oak Hill and Dunston. And we did somewhat similar amendments recently in Smorear Village residential zones. The building footprints weren't as big in those areas because they're in denser areas, more compact areas where Higginson Parkway has a fair amount of developable land where you could probably site buildings of size and not, you know, sort of be out of character with where they are. So I guess that's my introduction and I turn it back to you, Mr. Chair.
Thanks, Dan. I will open the public hearing for anyone who has any comments on this before we turn to any board discussion. I just ask that anyone who has any comments, just come up and introduce yourself, give your address and keep your comments within five minutes. So with that, I will open the public hearing. Do we have any takers? All right. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Anyone on the board have any comments? Roger?
Just one question for Dan is I basically agree with this. It makes total sense to me. Is it still going to have to be part of a greater mixed-use project though? Or could it be just a standalone?
The current proposal is to still expect it to be part of a mixed-use project. And so, yeah, that's the current thinking. There's a project that could potentially locate in a contract zone. That may not be that way, but right now that's the current thinking because it's, the Parkway is still envisioned to be principally a commercial, a commercial area.
True, okay. I'm fine.
Yes, thanks. Susan?
I'm in favor of this. I'm on the Long Range Planning Committee and we've been talking a lot about multiple-family dwellings and how to make it as consistent as possible, understanding that different areas have different needs. And I think this is definitely a step in the right direction.
Thanks. Ron?
Yeah, I agree. And I'm glad to see that some other things may be taking place on the Higginson Parkway. I think that that's been standing there a long time and occupied. And I think this is a good proposal for the committee that came up with it and like to see it go forward. Thanks.
Thanks, Ron. Nick?
I'm in favor of it as well.
Okay, thanks. I'm also in favor of this. Like Susan, I'm on the Long Range Planning Committee and to tell you, there was a bit of a thought that went into this and I do think that the going away from just sort of a bedroom limit to more of a square footage and height limit does provide more flexibility to the, unit count can be kind of a blunt instrument sometimes. And particularly in a zone like this where we're looking to provide some more flexibility, but still enforce those overall standards, that this is a good approach. So I think it's safe to say that the board is in favor of this and we've not heard any public comment, but we'll send a positive recommendation. Thank you. Thanks. Before we move on to the next item, I meant to note that item number 10 on the agenda, Carmen Chapman's requesting a preliminary subdivision review for 34 New Road, has been tabled. And we may see that one hopefully at our next meeting. Number five on the agenda is a consent item. Hospice of Southern Maine requests a reapproval of a site plan for 11 Lincoln Avenue, Assessor's Map R-62, Lot 29B. Jay?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As you just noted, this is for a site plan reapproval of the Hospice of Southern Maine, sort of as we termed it at the time, their administrative offices that are at the intersection of Route One and Lincoln Avenue. Essentially, the original approval was from 2014. The ordinance states that you have one year to get a substantial start. And if you don't get a substantial start in one year, the planner for good cause can provide a one-year extension. In the summer of 2015, the applicant, as they had discussed with the board in 2014, sort of about the difficulties they might have with fundraising and the long-term process that might take, sort of made that case. And the planning department extended the approval for one additional year. That year has come up and so there's really no other alternative under our ordinance but for the planning board to review and either approve or take action on the request to reapprove. So at this point, as the applicant's letter states, they are seeking reapproval for the previously approved plan. There was, there did appear to be a clerical mistake in the plan that was submitted with the approval was the plan, it was the last plan that was submitted to the board before it got revised per board's conditions. And so it's, again, the letter was pretty clear in that they were looking for reapproval, but it might be worth just for purposes of record being clear on that point. But other than that, staff has no other issues or items to address.
Thank you. See applicant, are they representative here?
Good evening. For the record, my name's Andrew Johnson. I'm with Stan Tech and we're assisting Hospice of Southern Maine with their ongoing efforts to develop this site. As Jay said, this was originally approved in July 2014. We then came back for an extension after a year. Actually, once, just after the original approval was granted, Hospice of Southern Maine went through some fairly significant organizational restructuring, which is one of the reasons for the delay in their getting to develop this property. But now they have gone through that process. They've emerged stronger. They have new leadership. They're very enthusiastic about the opportunities that this site proposes to them. The Board of Directors has formed a committee to re-explore some of the details of the development and just go over again what their aims and objectives are here. But they're very keen to move forward with this project now. Mary Pinto and Daryl Cady are here to support their application and also testament to the fact that they are very enthusiastic to move this forward. And we'd appreciate the board's consideration of reapproval of this plan. It was set in a good stead then to move forward with the fundraising. They'll have all their approvals in place and it'll just facilitate moving this project forward more quickly. If you have any questions, we're all available.
Thank you. Does anyone have any?
Yeah, I have a question.
Ron?
According to the submission, and I've heard everything you said, you say that they hope to complete the project within the next three or four years. Is that meaning completion of the project or when do they begin, want to begin the project?
They would love to begin it as soon as possible. And Mary and Daryl can go into a little more detail in this. But what they want to do now is move the project forward in a sensible and measured manner. So their first step is to look at everything they have in place now, reassess what their needs might be and what their needs might be moving forward, make sure they have the plan in place that they want to have in place, and then move it forward as quickly as they can. Obviously, some of that is dependent on fundraising. Some of it is dependent on decisions made by the committee and the board. The intention is to move it forward as quickly as they possibly can.
I guess, I guess where I'm going with all of that is is it going to be another two years and then come back and ask for the same extension?
Daryl can maybe address that. I think we all hope not, but.
Thank you. I'm Daryl Cady and the CEO at Hospice of Southern Maine. And as Andrew said, our goal right now is to begin the project as soon as possible. We have already talked to several individuals who would help us out with some of the fundraising. We have formed a subgroup of our Board of Directors, working group. And we've had a few meetings already. And we're very much looking forward to advancing the project to be completed, I would say to be completed within the next three years.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All set. Thank you.
Coming down here? Roger?
I just have, just kind of curious, is this designed to replace your present location on Route One? Okay.
Susan?
I'm all set.
Okay. All right. I don't have any issues with this. I appreciate the update and certainly choose the best of luck. And with that, I will make a motion for approval. I move to reapprove the site plan of Hospice of Southern Maine with the acknowledgement that the findings and applicable conditions from the planning board's July 14th, 2014 notice of decision remain effective. That's the motion.
All set.
Second? Any discussion? All in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you. Good luck. Item number six is another consent item. VNE Enterprises, Inc. is requesting site plan amendment review for Cobble Hill Trailer Sales, 148 Pleasant Hill Road, Assessor's Map R-78, Lot 45. Jay?
Yep, thank you, Mr. Chair. As you just noted, this item is before the board as a consent item. The board reviewed this at your last meeting. And board seemed generally comfortable with the basic parameters of the development. There were some detailed questions that needed to be worked out and by and large have been and have been reviewed by our civil engineer and our peer review engineer as well. And their sort of remaining comments have been incorporated into a condition of approval. Board members will remember, sort of the biggest hang-up, if you will, was the requirement that the floor drains be registered with the State of Maine. That's a requirement of Aqua for Protection overlay district and that has been done. And so with that, staff has provided board members with a motion for consideration.
Thank you, Jay. The applicant, are they representative here? Don't feel compelled to give a presentation, but just they do not appear to be here to give that opportunity. Okay.
I have a question. I don't know who to address it to. There's nobody here. I don't think I was, I don't think I understood clearly when the applicant was in front of us last. If you have your, yes, your survey, I cannot, your packet here, okay? The trucks that are now, the truck bodies that are presently, at the present moment, being parked so that they back up to Pleasant Hill Road, okay? They're shown to be continued, to be allowed in that position. But we talked about not cutting down any trees, okay? At this point, the trucks are right up against the back, they're parked in between all these trees. Between each two trees is a truck body. I was hoping that that wasn't going to be happening. And if you look at the drawing, the spaces being allowed for those truck bodies has pulled back from those trees by quite a bit. I don't see in anything that we have here that that actually has been written anywhere. And let's assume for the sake of discussion that it has not been. The question then becomes, should it be actually stated? And if it should be stated, how do I say this? I have a truck driver in my family. When you're getting back from a long trip, all you want to do is get rid of that truck body and go home. I'm concerned that even if we pull these truck bodies back from the trees when it's a certain time in night when you're backing those truck bodies in there, they're going to get too close to the trees. And so I'd like to suggest that they even consider putting some kind of a fence. I don't know what and I don't know how far back it would go. I think maybe if this has any value at all is a suggestion that maybe staff can help me. And just what am I looking at here? How many feet back does this, does this now look like it is?
Angela, she's got something? Can I maybe help?
Absolutely.
Would you? Anything?
Well, in between where the pavement is shown and like you said, right now they're parking in between those trees.
Right.
Is part of a swale which discharges to their soil bed, their filter bed. Part of their requirement is to do annual reporting, which includes that forbey and includes that whole swale area. So staff would be looking at it annually as well. So they can't be compacting that area and driving over that too.
The whole distance of McMonney Hill Road?
Well, you'll see, it's on Sheet Four.
Shows some contours in the swale that is part of that system. And you can require more than that. I'm just giving you the, I guess, something we'll be looking at as well.
The swale is before the things that are lined up to, I'm assuming, are parking areas. Truck body parking areas. The swale is closer to Lyata Drive.
It goes the whole length of the pavement area.
It's a fairly shallow swale.
It is, but it's hard, it's, I guess it's required not to be a compacted.
It's also supposed to infiltrate somewhat.
So I think what I'm hearing from Angela is that at least once a year, the town will know if it's being driven on. That doesn't.
But a lot can happen in between.
Two-year point.
I just wanted, yeah. So you can require more than that.
That's a great deal of clarity. I didn't have that before and that's very helpful. Having said that, I still don't think it's a bad idea to add a condition that some sort of, and we'd have to decide whether or not we wanted to do this and if so, what kind of fencing it would be to keep, to make sure that the parking does not occur there. I mean, it's going to help. I'm making too big a deal out of this, right?
No, and they are showing boulders around the soil bed filter for just, you know, part of that purpose too, not pushing snow and all of that. And that can always be something that got continued up that line.
Those are boulders shown?
Yes. Well, not in those areas, but those could be continued. They agreed to them around the soil bed filter and obviously they're not here to speak to it. So, but it doesn't seem like a long stretch to throw some more along that edge to keep that from happening either.
So I mean, there seems like there's a few options. If the board does have concerns, you know, understanding that there will at least be that annual inspection, but that annual inspection's that one time a year and won't prohibit the person who comes in who's tired and pulls back. So it seems like the board could think about a couple of things. I think as was already mentioned that there are, I've tried to bring up the grading plan here. There are some boulders that were asked by, to be put in place to protect the.
Tension pond.
The tension area, the underdrain area. So board could consider continuing those stones along, though I don't know what type of impact that might have in this swale. Could look at potentially doing a split rail fence that, or, you know, could request that there be intermittent curb stops, which that would. Now, you see at the end of parking lots typically?
Just as a point of order, I don't know how far we can go with this without the applicant here. And not that we necessarily get into a lot of back and forth on details, but I would just, I might suggest that we, to the extent we have concerns or suggestions, that maybe you can compile those, Jay, and take those back to the applicant. Otherwise, we're kind of just talking to ourselves and I.
Well, I guess I just sort of offer that it, the applicant doesn't need to be present for the board to take action. So if the board feels that there is something that they want to see, the board can make a condition of approval and the applicant not being here, notwithstanding, that's their condition of approval. Or if the board wishes to table it, that's at your discretion as well. But I do want, let the board know that there is no requirement that an applicant be here for any application. You can dispense of the information that's provided.
Yeah, and I do realize that. I appreciate you pointing that out for everyone's benefit. And we can kind of decide as a board how we want to proceed, but I.
We have a consultant in the audience that is in communication with the applicant that.
No, we're just going to do it by cell phone.
I mean, I think it's safe to condition with some flexibility on what the remedy is if the board wants to. I mean, if it, if there's options provided, so it's curb stops, boulders or another, then it can be solved this evening potentially.
I'm certainly, I'm not in any rush to table anyone or not give the opportunity for approval, but I just.
I would personally be happy with a condition of approval that you wordsmiths figure out how it says, but leave the options as to what they will actually be. Any one of those three would make me happy, the fence, the boulders, what was the third one? Oh, one of those concrete.
Actual curb stops, right.
And the applicant can choose whichever one they prefer. I'm not crazy about the cement thing, but that's just because I'm all about how it works.
I've taken a crack at a quick, and I know the board has the draft motion with a number of other conditions. I have taken a crack at, potentially this might get the board where you're looking to go. A condition, I guess, would become, 1E would be, so this is prior to issuance of a building permit that the, sorry, let me see. Prior to issuance of a building permit, the plans be revised to provide adequate traffic measures between the front parking stalls in Pleasant Road, Pleasant Hill Road to prevent encroachment beyond the paved area.
And just let the discussions about what that's going to be be with staff?
If the board wants to dial in as to what it is, then please do. Or if you're comfortable with staff reviewing what that measure is.
Did what you just read say anything about staff involvement in which of those it would be? As long as it says with input from or with.
About to be approved by staff?
Approved by staff, I'm fine with that. I don't think they have to come back here. And we don't have to tell them which one of the three to use, just do something. And staff will.
Sure. So at this point, it would be 1E and provide adequate traffic, maybe traffic measures between the front parking stalls and Pleasant Hill Road to prevent encroachment beyond the paved area to be approved by staff.
That's okay with me.
Were there any other comments?
I think that's good.
Okay. Can you add something? Sure. Yeah, no, I don't have anything to add there and I'm comfortable putting the conditional approval motion forward. I move to approve the site plan amendment application of VNE Enterprises, Inc. for the site plan amendment for property located at 148 Pleasant Hill Road, Assessor's Map R-78, Lot 45. The application includes site improvements to take place in three phases, including building expansions, stormwater facilities, site grading and other associated infrastructure improvements. Conditions, number one, prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall, A, pay the traffic, traffic impact fees, total $3,147. B, shall secure a permit from the sanitary district. C, shall revise the inspection, maintenance and housekeeping plan to ensure references and edits are correct, revisions to be reviewed and approved through the planning department. D, shall execute and record the maintenance agreement required by the post-construction stormwater infrastructure management ordinance. E, shall revise the site plan and set to provide adequate traffic measures between the front parking stalls and Pleasant Hill Road to prevent encroachment beyond the paved area to be approved by staff. Condition number two, prior to the issuance of a certificate of. Condition number two, prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, all exterior site lighting fixtures are to be full cutoff light fixtures. And number three, a pre-construction meeting is required before the start of construction. The meeting shall include appropriate town staff, the developer and their contractor, and utility company representatives if applicable. The pre-construction meeting may be scheduled in coordination with the senior planner. Prior to scheduling the pre-construction meeting for the project, the applicant shall submit a notice of intent to comply with the main construction general permit with the main Department of Environmental Protection and supply a copy of this document to the planning department.
I'll second.
That's the end of the motion. You have a second? Any further discussion? No? All in favor? That's unanimous?
Thank you. Thanks for your help with that.
Item number seven, Good Pain LLC requests site sign review as required as a condition of approval for 362 Payne Road, access map R38, Lot 4. Jay?
Yep, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think as you just read in the introduction, or the statement of what this is, it's, when the applicant was for the board back in July, one of the conditions of approval was that they come before you with the final signed rendering for consideration and ultimately approval before moving forward. So the applicant has to provide that to the board for consideration. Not much to offer outside of that at this point.
Thank you, and we, note for the record, we do have the design here in front of us, and we have the applicant. Welcome.
Bill Saul, owner and operator of Atop Chimney, present time moving into 362 Payne Road and given, met with Bruce Bailey, Bailey signed, he wrote me up a picture and I guess he called it a spec sheet of the sign I'd like to construct out in front of my business. It's going to be, it's a basic sign, as you can see, the pillar that, oh, the post is going to sit on, it's going to be, it's going to be, hopefully, look like a chimney when I get done. It's going to be made of brick, as you can see, and it'll just kind of fit into the, you know, to the atop chimney. What I'm trying to get across is just, you know, a real good plain-looking sign, it's not going to be too flashy, but I wanted to put brick in it because of the atop chimney. It's pretty simple. It's going to be a, that's going to be the base of it. Instead of having just hanging on a pole or a wooden post or something, I just wanted to construct. It will be on a pole, but I have to build a chimney around it, so.
Okay. Thank you. Does anyone have any comments or questions on this?
I have a question for staff.
Do you?
The staff comments, number two, a second, I'll get it, middle paragraph, staff has reviewed the proposed sign concept and has no further comment on the design at this time, and then it says, "Board members may wish to reflect upon the provisions of the signage chapter of the design standards when considering the proposal." I'm not sure what it was I was supposed to find when I was looking for the...
The sign chapter has just a host of commentary about the way freestanding signs should look, the downlighting of lights. Again, we sort of, or I reviewed them, I didn't have any issues, but I was just letting the board know what I had reviewed.
Okay, 'cause I don't have any issues with that either. I think it turns out the way the applicant says it might turn out, it would be interesting to say the least. Yeah, no problems.
Thank you. Anyone else? Roger?
The only thing I had is the last sentence where it says, "The code officer will verify the correct setback." Is that the note resolved?
No. I haven't applied for the permit yet.
Okay, okay. All right.
Thanks.
I'm fine.
Anyone down there? No. Nice sign. I agree and appreciate you coming back, making one more trip in front of us, and I think it's going to be a nice sign, and I think this sheet does a good job of kind of illustrating the concept that you were talking about, and I think we do acknowledge everything else you're doing at the site there as well. So I will put forward a very simple motion for approval. I move that the board approve Good Pain LLC's requests for sign approval as required as a condition of approval for 362 Payne Road, access map R38, Lot 4.
Second.
You have a second? Any discussion? All in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you, good luck.
Thank you.
So just as a reminder, and I know you already mentioned it, Mr. Saul, but we will ask you that you work with our code officer to be sure you get the sign permit for installing. Thank you.
Item number eight, Valentine Development requests an amended phasing plan for Eastern Village, access map R73, Lot 21A. Jay?
Thank you, Mr. Bacon.
Or is it Dan?
Sure, I'll take a crack at it, and then Jay can finish up if need be. This is a fairly simple amendment relating to two different aspects of trails or sidewalks in the project. The Eastern Village project, as part of the original approval, original approval, was and is to build a new section of Eastern Trail, parallel with the Eastern Road. So rather than, right now, people are using the Eastern Trail, share Eastern Road with motorists, et cetera, when they get from the parking area up to Black Point Road. It's part of the Eastern Village project, and currently, as it's approved, in two different phases, that trail would be built along Eastern Village, between Eastern Village and Eastern Road. The original phasing and approval was for part of the trail to be built with Phase 3, and then the other part built with Phase 5, and the request is to move that second part into, I think, Phase 3B. So that results in the trail, Eastern Trail, being built earlier in the project than the original approval. The other proposed change is there was a short, little, different path or trail from Commerce or Commerce Drive, the intersection of Commerce Drive and Valentine, down to part of the project that really went through the woods on an easement for the sanitary district for a sewer line. And the applicant's proposing, instead of doing that, that trail, to donate the money that would have been spent on that trail to the larger Eastern Trail project that the town and DOT and Eastern Trail Management and District are working on to build the remaining section of the Eastern Trail from where it ends today, near the Hillcraft Retirement Community, into South Portland. And that's a major initiative the town's been working on for quite some time. We're very close to getting the requisite funding to move forward with that, and so there's an active fundraising campaign going on right now. And so that's, we've been coordinating with Kerry Anderson, the developer of Eastern Village, on that, and thought that that might be potentially a better use of develop his money to go towards that larger trail initiative than this little side trail that potentially is not going to be used nearly as much as the Eastern Trail. So I think staff would recommend both of those things be approved if the board is obviously amendable. Thanks.
Thanks, Dan. How are you doing? Get it covered on?
I think you did all right.
The Strandersons is here. Would you like to come up and say anything else, or you don't feel like you have to, but?
The only thing I guess I would add is that... It's the only thing I would add is that the design for the trail that Dan's talking about, that goes from a paved section of the project up through the sewers and up to here, originally was part of what was going to be a second piece that went up to Route 1, through a piece of property, we used stone along Commerce Drive, and through the transfer of that parcel to the town, that particular trail section was eliminated. So it kind of almost, I guess, means the other trail's somewhat mute, or we didn't really see the need for it. And if we could put the money towards something that we feel is better than, that's what we're here to do. It's a pretty straightforward request, I think, with both of them, and we hope you agree with us.
Thank you. We do have the opportunity for public comment on this, if anyone is interested. Seeing none, we have a board discussion.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just, just as you close the public comment section, board members will have received, I believe, one letter from one of, Mr. Salisbury, I believe it is. So I just wanted to make that noted as part of the public comment. Thank you.
Supporting the idea.
Susan?
Just one quick question. In lieu of developing that piece as it was originally proposed, how do we determine how much money is going to be given to the, well, as Dan suggested, it'd be used for the Eastern Trail on the other hand, but, you know, who decides what that monetary value is?
So Mr. Anderson developed his estimate, and I can, maybe you can elaborate for the board how we can...
No, I don't really even know what it is. I just want to know what's the process.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
He says to the town, this is what his mathematics says it's going to be, and then the town at the staff level just says, yes, we'll take it. I mean, I just want to know how it works, that's all.
Mr. Anderson will provide the funds, either, I guess, maybe, Dan, maybe you can answer.
You talking about how is the value determined, or where we put the money to dedicate to? Okay. It's mine, Jay worked more closely with Kerry on the cost, but I believe he had a proposal or two done of what the estimated roughing in of the trail was, and that's, I think, what was accepted by planning staff. In terms of where the money goes, the town is working with the Eastern Trail Alliance, which is the group that's advocating for the Eastern Trail completion, and there's a dedicated account that's specifically only for donations, and so that account only can be used towards the match to construct the trail. So, and there's a lot of other donations going into that account, and so it's isolated for that use.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Anything else? Roger? No? Down here? No? Don't think I have anything else either. It sounds like a win-win, common sense solution.
Good idea.
So I will put forward another simple motion. I move to approve Valentine Development's request for amended phasing plan for Eastern Village, access map R73, Lot 21A, as proposed.
As proposed.
I'll second.
Second? Any discussion? All in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number nine, JDR Trust 2 requests a sketch plan review for 25 Plaza Drive, access map R58, Lot 32M. Jay?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As board members, as you just noted, this is a sketch plan. It is in the TVC District. The intent of the sketch plan is to enable an applicant to present a concept for development to the board such that the board can understand the type, scale, scope of the project, and so the board can provide the applicant with some initial feedback in terms of their design and what their proposal is. To that end, you'll receive staff comments, as well as comments from our town engineer, and an email from Mr. Bacon regarding the proposed design, referencing many of the sort of standards, applicable standards of the TVC District, the purpose and sort of the town's ordinance's vision for the TVC as, in terms of being a village area, sort of high density, a lot of amenities to make it, enhance the streetscape and the pedestrian movements and multi-mobility through the site. So with that, as I said, you'll have received our comments and had an opportunity to read through those, and I'll turn it back to you, and staff are here to answer questions as they may arise.
Thanks, Jay, and I will turn it over to the applicant.
Good evening, I'm Steve Berg, the trustee for JDR Trust 2. I have Kylie Mason here from Sebago Technics, who'll go through the actual planning process we looked at and address a lot of the comments that came back from staff. It's a further development, redevelopment of Oak Hill Plaza on some vacant land that's there now. When we come back for site plan review, there'll be a lot more additional information added, but at this point, we just want to see, you know, get feedback from the board, their thoughts on these ideas we had for some land developed along Plaza Drive, which runs from Route 1 down towards Hanaford Drive. If you're coming in from the Route 1 side, it'd be the land on the right side of the road as you head down towards Hanaford Drive. And with that, I'll turn it over to Kylie for further comments.
Is this working okay? Okay, so just to give you guys an orientation, this is Route 1 right here, this is McDonald. Hanaford Drive would be out here. We did bring, and we moved out, so just to give you the context here, this would be Route 1, Hanaford Drive, you have Hanaford over here. One of the things that we proposed early on was expansion of this kind of pedestrian spine through here, which stretches over to this way. We have some grates along this section here and here where we thought it'd be more difficult to extend them this time, but we do have comments from Dan and Jay about extending the sidewalk on this side of Route 1 towards the building, and... Things that we're going to work on next is working towards Dan's comments of shifting this forward a little bit. I think one of the things that's sort of like, here, see, it's not going to be, is we're really trying to align the driveways here with the exit of McDonald's. What we would like to do next is pulling this as far forward as we can, we'd like to pull it a little bit towards Route 1 as well. That might skew the driveway a bit, so it won't be lined up with the normal exit. We don't know if this would be a big deal, but what that would do is allow us to pull this forward, fill the drive-through for the bank at the back of the building, and then take advantage of the street parking space. That way, we'd be behind the building as opposed to in front of the building. And so that would be what we'd like to explore next, but we would really like to see that on this driveway. We just proposed exposure of the driveway here, looking at the comments, probably will look to reopen this so that we can have a connection out of the parking area, and we will build the structural book to be the... I think we're going to have a little bit of trouble with all the multiple driveway cuts opposite of the street parking, but we will draw it so that you can, so it looks like we're taking the, whether that would be desirable or not. We've explored, seeing the sidewalks here along Plaza Drive, and you are probably familiar, this area of Plaza Drive is fairly flat to the parking, but then as you come around the corner a little bit, you know, the grade comes up quite deeply to the parking lot edge. So we had avoided showing a sidewalk in this area just because of construction, because it may be, you know, a sidewalk is beneficial. So we could look at exploring that a little bit further, maybe we could narrow down that section of Plaza Drive to support a sidewalk along the side of it. So over here, what we were proposing was a drive-through office in which we'll paint, especially in what we're moving up. Concept from Plaza Drive at Route 1, we look towards this. Obviously, this is going to change a little bit, it won't have the parking lot in front of it, and that's a concept that we'll be working on, but this is what we were thinking in terms of that, for the orientation, that would be this space, but I don't think this will change a little bit, we'll try to pull this down, sort of be slightly different in terms of context. The other building we're proposing was a 5,200 square foot footprint office based on the bottom, and I think we're going to sort of residential in the back of it. We are showing a large parking expansion at the back here, certainly open to providing a future use, like either here or in one of these locations. There's a bit of grade here, as in the end, it looks like something from 70 to 74 in this location, so that might be, might be doable, but it might sound a bit touchy to So, that might be, might be doable, but if that was a touch to it.
Anything else?
I was just trying to think if there's anything I wanted to add, but I'd rather respond to questions and get direct feedback.
Okay. Sure. Thank you. Nick, would you like to start?
Sure. So, on the building to the left, my left, you said might be residential units. You're considering residential units on the
On the second story.
Second story. Would you be dedicating the parkings? Do you have intentions to dedicate parking, assign parking spots, reserve parking spots for anyone that lived there? Or is it based on anywhere they can find a spot over there?
Given the size of the parking that we're proposing, I think they'd be all right in the non-peak hours. But we can, if it would be desirable, we can certainly assign parking.
I was just curious.
Yeah. It's probably a little far ahead of
I'm sure it's way far ahead.
Where we are, but
Right now. When you said residential, it just triggered the thought that if I had to bring my laundry into my apartment, where was I going to be parking my car?
Sure.
The things you think of when you're sitting here.
Absolutely.
Anyway, I do like the idea that you're going to be moving the proposed bank building forward. I think it's a good idea. You know, aligning that McDonald's driveway is I don't know, I don't know how to interpret that. I mean, I, there's a lot of traffic that goes through there on a, I believe there's a lot of traffic that goes through there. At least when I travel through there, there seems to be a lot of cars out there with me.
Going through the McDonald's exit or going on the road?
Just down that road. So, aligning those two driveways, I'm not sure if it's a good thing or a bad thing. If it's, I don't know. I guess that's where you ask for traffic studies, right? But I'm excited to see what you're going to, what you'll come back with once everything shifts, where everything will kind of get moved around to. I think that will help me visually understand where you are with the project right now. Can you clarify something for me on the existing building? Are those loading docks in the back of the existing building?
Over here.
Yeah.
They're entry doors, like service doors, but they're not like a tractor-trailer loading area.
Okay. So, you don't expect any of
No, you wouldn't, you wouldn't have the depth to come in this way. But certainly, you, we want to make room that a truck could circulate into the back just to
A fire lane.
A fire lane, yeah.
Fire lane, okay. I think that's it for right now. I am, I am excited to see what happens when you start shifting things around, how it all falls together. It's nice to see some work done. I, I think this is one of those projects where this is going to be music to Corey's ears, where I think the sidewalks, you know, I think the sidewalks are a big part of this because that, that area, the vision for that area is people to be walking and businesses to thrive and have that nice community feel to it. So, thank you.
Thanks. Susan?
I think it's very exciting. I've been waiting for something to happen for this long time. So, I think it's a good sign for the economy in Scarborough. You people don't do things as you, if you aren't pretty sure you're not going to be throwing good money after bad. I think it's a sidewalk, definitely.
I agree.
Definitely a sidewalk. At first blush, I would much prefer to see the building to the right come down so that it's more in line with the other new, than be too concerned about the lining up of McDonald's. But I'm not a traffic engineer, so again, we'll see what the traffic engineers say. I'm encouraged by the drawing that shows all kinds of street trees. Yes, let's hear for street trees. I want to refer to Dan's letter to us, which I'm sure the client, the applicant already got from the 25th. Because you're already doing a lot of what it is that he's recommending. And I just want to go on record as saying, yes, definitely, that the, the design of the building, street trees, location, I really like the idea of the sidewalks as many as it can possibly be in street parking. Until Dan had put that down, I never thought of it. But it would be a perfect place to try and do some street parking to bring the general aura of what goes on there down. Because I spent a lot of time in that area. And people do go faster than they should down that road, hoping, just hoping beyond hope that they're somehow going to make it across Route One when there's no intersection, right? And no lights and no nothing. They're just going to do a Hail Mary and take off. If we just, anything that can be done to make it look like it's a calmer, go more slowly, put up signs that say, "Go slowly," whatever, I think it's just very, very important. So, again, this is a golden opportunity. I like what Dan said about people starting to locate in Oak Hill because it's potential for becoming more comfortable for people, not just cars. So, anything that can be done to, to support that. And I can see that you basically are in agreement with that. And then, of course, last but not least, it's this, when you're in the middle of this process, looking for the potential for future interconnections, right? It's fairly obvious that that's going to happen, but taking a look at it at this stage, coming up with some ideas, some suggestions of how it might look, is a golden opportunity, again, to sort of start that process going. So, yay. Looking forward to having you come back. Thank you.
Thanks. Roger?
Thanks. I think it's kind of exciting as well. One thing that struck me when I looked at this was all the high top, the, you know, asphalt everywhere.
Oh, yeah.
And I'm just kind of curious, besides this particular project, are there any plans to do anything else with any, on the rest of the property?
At the current time, this is
Not the current time, but I mean
Down the road. With a project this size, I mean, at the future, you know, down the road, I'm sure some of these other buildings will be redeveloped. We've looked at it in the past. But again, it's a long-range process. So, this is why we took, you know, this chunk of land with the vision for this area. Hopefully, that will create some of these other buildings that we want to redevelop those in the future. But that's, and we feel this is a good section of it. You know, in redesigning existing buildings, the old shade buildings, you have some more facade treatment, so breaks up the length of that building as well. As far as other land holding, some of the lots, other land we own is already in wetland areas, so it's hard to develop further down the road of our holdings. So, I mean, this is where we're looking at now for potential redevelopment. And, you know, a few years down the road, there might be other buildings that, you know, opportunities that come up.
I was just thinking that this has developed over the decades, literally, you know. And I was just kind of curious. So, you have like a master plan that even though you may not be planning to do something like within the next five years in a certain area, but you could see in the future, redeveloping like a building, you know, something like that. Just, just to make the overall site, it just seems like there's an awful lot of, you know, asphalt all over the place there. And there's a lot of cars driving in all kinds of different directions. I mean, it's a very busy place. There's no doubt about it.
Sure. I mean, one of the reasons as well of asphalt is because the zoning requirements require that much parking out there. So, I mean, we've done things to, you know, put some wayfinders signage out there. And, you know, as we've developed the past 10 years, for instance, you know, there's been a lot of thought going into it, going back and removing existing buildings. Right now, you know, the economics don't support that by development. So, we just, to draw pretty pictures and tell it to you, they, oh, this was what we would like to do, the economic reality isn't there right now for that. But by being able to do a plan like we're doing here, that can show what further development can come on, you know, existing stuff, redevelopment.
I mean, I commend you and, you know, the retolos for everything you've done there. I just think it's such a signature location in the town. Anything, anything you can do to enhance the, you know, the appearance of it. Would greatly enhance the value of the property too.
Sure.
So, but I, I think it's pretty exciting. So, you're pretty, it sounds like you're pretty sure that it's going to be like a bank on that.
Yeah. I mean, that's what we're proposing. We're coming back, obviously.
Are there any, are there any banks still left around?
Plenty are not represented in town currently.
Okay. I guess I don't have any other further questions at this point.
Thank you. I agree, this is exciting. And as Susan said, this is a golden opportunity. And every once in a while, we get a chance to look at one of these sites that, you know, such a critical part of the town. And I'm definitely encouraged to hear that you're amenable to, you know, moving, moving the building up and doing the, doing the on-street parking and looking at sidewalks. And I will echo Susan in saying, I hope that you can also look at future interconnectivity. And that's, it's obviously a big part of that puzzle that you've been looking at and working on for years. And, you know, we did, you know, you did some incremental improvements a few years ago with the wayfinding signage and some of the lighting and other things. And so, I think it's definitely moved in the right direction. And obviously, as you alluded to, economics are behind just how ambitious you can be with any one project. But this is exciting and I'll look forward to seeing, you know, as Nick said, sort of what this, how it reads and how it feels and looks once you've made those shifts. I would suggest that we do plan a sidewalk. I mean, we, we typically, I think, tend to think about sidewalks more when we're talking about more kind of rural or residential projects that we're, where we're trying to visualize something that's not there yet. This is a little different. It's something that all of us see probably every day and maybe multiple times per day. But I think because there's so much going on there, it would be helpful to walk around once we have the revised, more fleshed-out site plan in hand and just kind of walk around and look at how things line up and think about, you know, what, how it's really going to work. I think that would be really helpful. In terms of the, the aligning of the curb cuts, I agree that that's, you know, that there's some ambiguity there. And I guess we'll, we'll look in part to see what traffic studies show and just how, how big of an issue that might be. My gut feeling is that on balance, it's going to be better to have, to be able to slide things over. Although it's more conceptual at this point, as you said, I also think it's exciting that you're thinking about a potential residential component because that's, I think that's one big missing link right there, obviously. Anytime you talk about having a town-village center, to really make that happen, you've got to have some residential. So, that would be great to somehow make that work at some point. And I'm glad that you're already thinking in those terms. Beyond that, there are all the usual, this is the kind of usual laundry list of items for, that we always kind of throw out, sketch plan and looking forward to seeing for the more fleshed-out site plan. So, you know, things like lighting and, you know, some of the interconnectivity, some of the circulation details and things like that. And we'll just look forward to seeing that. And we can walk around together and hopefully see it come together. Beyond that, I don't really have anything else. I think the board in general has pretty much captured it all. And hopefully, that's helpful to you in terms of feedback at this stage.
Very much so.
Okay. Roger, do you have something else?
Yeah, just one quick question. Do you have any insight as to what's happening with the gray stone building? Who owns it now or?
Yeah, that's owned by the Foley family.
Oh, the Foleys, okay.
They have some structural plans that they've been working on. We've talked to them back and forth of other proposals. But at this point, we're not able to, we're not able to have any agreements with them.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure. Mr. Chair, if it's possible, we'll certainly work on developing another concept. But we won't have fully fleshed-out plans for a little bit. This is not a, this isn't on a fast track. So, and with winter coming, would it be possible to schedule a sidewalk in advance of the next application, just to have the sidewalk?
I would say so. As long as, I think we've kind of identified what the, what the parameters and the variables are. And, you know, if you have maybe a revised sketch, that would be helpful. But if not, that's in the interest of getting out there and, and walking around. I think that would be fine.
Would the next one be 9/19, the deadline for sketch?
Sounds about right.
Our next meeting is September 19.
Okay.
And we can work with you on terms of the timeline for this sidewalk. Typically, we, sidewalks happen at different times depending on what we're looking at. And I think, you know, as, as the chair indicated earlier, this should be a little bit of a unique sidewalk for the board, whereas typically, we are walking into the woods and there's a road alignment. Where here, a lot of those elements are there. So, I think I'm hearing from the chair and by nodding of heads of the other
Don't need my boots?
May not need the boots this time. That I think, you know, if we just have a sketch, that may put the building in consistency and performance with the ordinance that we may be able to get out there sooner than later. Be happy to work with you offline on that and schedule that through the board.
Anything more from us?
No.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
As mentioned previously, item number 10, Carmen Chapman's requesting preliminary subdivision review for 34 New Road was tabled. Jay can give us a brief update on sort of the context there and where that stands.
Sure. Just wanted to give the board a quick update. You do have before you a memo from Normandot Associates. It's sort of an interim memo. They've conducted their first review. We're actually going to be meeting out on site on Thursday with a state soil scientist to come to some agreement or to review the project more fully in terms of the wetlands delineation. And as, as we had, as the board had asked, I guess I meant to say, the applicant did provide that alternative road analysis. And so, based on that discussion, waiting for some of our state agencies to weigh in on the different natural constraints, resources and characteristics and their determination of sort of higher values, so to speak, of the various items that are out there.
That's it. Thanks, Jay. Is there a town planner's report?
Not for me, but
I guess I would
He usually handles this, right?
Yeah. I guess I would just note for the board that we did, staff has reviewed two items for a pre-application review that you'll probably be seeing at either your next meeting or in the coming meetings. One is for, I believe it's for South Gate Road, which is the recent rezoning on South Gate Road that went from B3, it was, I believe, the industrial district. That parcel, they submitted. And so, we've done one round of staff-level review. So, presumably, they'll be revising plans and coming back. We also have begun reviewing the project, the Dunston Village. The Route One component, commercial mixed-use component to Dunston that the board did the site plan and master plan review of the three-step plan development process going back almost a year ago at this point. They're now beginning to develop their formal site plan subdivision application material. So, we have done one round of review of those as well. So, just to give you a heads up on a few things that you may be seeing.
Thank you. Do we have an administrative amendment report?
One item to report out at the fishing game site. They are, had a request to bring in some fill from a project that's happening in Portland. Kepisik Pond is being dredged out. And they're bringing some fill in to add to some of their berms that protect drivers from falling shells, which
It's always a good thing.
The chair seemed to deem as a good idea. It's really not, it's not changing the site in any, they're not adding any more shooting ranges or anything to that effect. It's really enhanced safety. And so, staff reviewed that, again, with the chair's blessing and provide administrative approval.
I am pro not getting hit by a falling shell. Any planning board correspondence beyond what was already referenced? We have the, the Normandot Associates memo that you just mentioned. We also had an email from a neighbor regarding the Eastern Village. I think that's it. Proposal that was supportive of, of that. Okay. Any planning board comments?
Yes.
Susan?
I have two.
All right.
I'd just like to again say that I thought our workshop before this, this meeting was, was definitely worth the time and want to go on record as saying, you know, at least a couple more times a year, we should do something like that. I also want to say thank you to Dan for the letter he wrote to the Press Herald, right? Wasn't it the Press Herald? About the, which you were mentioning tonight, the Eastern Trail and how much money we've already raised and asking people to contribute so that, because it's a matching amount that we need. It's an incredible accomplishment that we've done as a, as a It's an incredible accomplishment that we've done as a state, let alone each local community has done and, and because we're so dedicated to our marsh here in Scarborough, to have done as much as we've done, I mean, we just need to make sure that we get a lot of publicity for this and thank you, Dan, for doing that.
Sure.
That'll do it.
Thank you. Roger?
Two things. Do you want a secretary's report? Don't have one.
No one put it on the agenda?
Okay. I, I think it would be worthwhile mentioning Mike Woods, Mike Wood, leaving the board and taking the job. He's done a great job, you know, as a, you know, serving the town in, you know, a number of capacities and we're going to miss him, so.
Absolutely.
That's it.
Thank you.
No report.
Put you on the spot next time.
Okay.
Thank you. I'll echo what Susan said about the workshop, it was helpful and I do hope we have more, a little bit more regularly. And I'd also like to acknowledge Mike Woods' service to the town, two different stints with the planning board as well as the town council and number of other activities and I'm glad to know that he's maintaining his residence here in Scarborough and he still considers himself a Scarborough resident, so he will be watching us and I'm sure he'll be back. And with that, I will move to adjourn.
Thank you.
All in favor? Thank you.